Okay, turn your volume down.
Yeah, I can hear you, sorry.
Well, Jamie's still out here. She's such a good mood again. That's what I'm thinking.
Uh, my order, the Othman for council one session meeting of Monday, November third, twenty twenty five. Um, please join me for pleasure.
I play only in the United States. And to the Republic, which is in us.
Well, Colin, Mr. Cody?
Councilmember Isaiah Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Jeff for Paris?
Here.
Councilmember David Gourmet?
Here.
Councilmember Jamie Leonardi?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember John Arnold?
Here.
Vice President of Council, Mandy McNona?
Here.
Council President Nancy Ride?
Here, thank you very much. So we're all in attendance and our first item is an oath of office, but um it's going to be held. For a new member for the communications committee. So when she's able to come, we'll swear in or she will come see you.
Sure.
Um. Do we have any comments from the public? You're you're.
Shall wait for it.
You can wait for it.
You're you're actually on the agenda. Um, correspondence, Mr. Cody?
We've achieved um two correspondences in the last uh week. One was the press release from the USGA regarding the economic impact of the US Open in the region. It's a similar press release that was sent out to the public and used on other stations. The other one was an email received this morning from Kerry DeRosa representing the boosters for um River View acknowledging the project we're undertaking to get funding for the field lights of River Riverine Park, excuse the Riverside Park. And uh with that email was attached a edition of about just over three hundred signatures, I think three hundred fifteen if we counted them.
So that is, it acknowledged the borough and the school board, so we know it takes bigger than we said.
I'll be I'll be quite frank with you, I should I put it and save it to the next meeting forward, put it there and I really.
It just asks for our support, that's all it asks for and we've already given her support.
But our warrants.
So now we've given we've given permission and support that it will be but it can be built there. Um, so that we've already done what she asked us to do, so.
Not asking for it.
No.
Oh, you are only two.
There's only two.
And our minutes will be circulated when they've been edited?
Yes.
Okay, um for approval.
Yes, I'll send them out separately so we can take um either work session or regular meetings, we can approve them in the number of regular meeting.
So our first item is um with recreation board is Tony Lesko is here this evening. And Mr. Tomlinson and um did talk about the Riverside Park playground improvements.
Uh, well, I'm here for that, but also here to talk about lights and uh first of all, uh did you guys see how dark it is out there?
It is dark.
It's really dark. Lights would be nice. Um, does anyone have any questions about the lighting project, what we're trying to do, what we presented to the public? Any uh anything at all about the lighting project?
I have one.
Yes.
At at what point you have, I know it's sort of premature, some point in the project, you're gonna have to address the question about it's sort of paint supplies, once they're installed. I know you talked about electricity to be a minor cost, but maintenance supplies. Replacing a panel on seventy foot pole, et cetera, that will not be.
Yeah, it's a good point, uh the the lights come with um, they all have different packages, but I the the main vendor that we prefer has a twenty five year warranty on the lights. And uh one of the vendors did mention that a uh some kind of maintenance um program or like a contractor that would check on the lights periodically, annually or every other year um isn't a bad idea. But if a light fails, they'll replace it.
That includes all all the costs of getting up there and not just the cost of lights.
Yeah, they're not gonna drop a light off on your desk and say, go go put it up there, um but we can verify that, that's certainly something to to get in writing.
Uh, this is, yeah, this is Jamie, I just had a quick question, I know you had mentioned previously, Tony, about another estimate coming in a little lower than the original quote, did where did that estimate come in where you expected it?
Uh, yeah, we, so a a fourth company contacted us. Uh, they are still working on a price and they promised to get us all inclusive price including full electrical installation, I've not seen that yet.
Okay, tha- thank you.
Uh, one of the main vendors that we had preferred to use, uh we had them sharpen their pencil and we're well under budget of the numbers that were presented to the public. So we're trending in the right direction and uh Leonard Smith put in some hefty contingencies, which I respect, but I don't think we'll need all of that, so that puts us in another good, a good position. I think we're we're well well covered, should we receive the grants or any part of the grant that we need.
Thank you.
Videos have some questions about lights?
Okay, well, I just wanna give you a quick summary of our findings from the public meetings. Um, we had a meeting in September and a meeting in October held during our regular record meetings. September meeting had a number of people in the audience, we counted seventeen people in favor of the lights and one against. Our October meeting had a a smaller crowd, three in favor, two against. We had other written correspondence emails sent in, we had one in favor and four against, so the people who took the time to write in rather than show up, they seem to be skewing more towards the nose. Um, and then also included here is the uh river Riverside boosters, uh boosters, they were um they had the three hundred fourteen yeses, there were no noes obviously in that that group.
And were the uh, you know, the petition for residents?
Yes.
So there were no for our office?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Um. Don't reject that.
Mostly, I mean, the addresses I noticed were upon, but I didn't read every of them if they're finished.
The meetings, um so I don't think anybody wants to know.
We just heard that they were for distributing the energy, so so that's why.
So they do on behalf of school, did they become?
Yeah, their users.
Their users, but so are other people that do deck hockey, but I have that city side petition. I mean, they can sell.
Even if even if you said that twenty percent of the three hundred fourteen are not Othman residents, that's still a pretty solid tendency of people who are for the lights.
Yeah.
Um, top comments in favor of the lights where the school district is already spending five to six thousand per year over three days of the homecoming lights. The whites offer a better overall vibe and more spirit to the games. Parents work can actually attend games, uh a lot of games are in the afternoon, it's you gotta take off work really early to get there. Uh, it's a good economic impact for the community. And um kids need Fridays to rest before the Saturday. We're sorry, kids, this I have under a call, kids would need the weekend to rest after a Friday. Top comments against, uh traffic on Third Street is already bad, needs to be addressed in some fashion. Kids roaming the lower park at night. Uh, they would need more police at night games. Uh, kids need Fridays to rest before the game, so we had one counterpoint there.
It's a very uh contradictory.
And uh lights spillage into neighbors' homes. And uh I think the lights that everyone's proposed do offer a really good solution to spillage. If you look at the deck hockey lights, those are not the lights that are going, those are angled pretty offensively towards some of the houses. And if we get to the point with whether the lighting project goes through or not, we can wanna get somebody in there to to reangle those lights and try to approve that just for the the neighbors to say they're shining in their their homes.
Or the deck hockey.
Deck hockey.
Is there a way that the police could um turn them off if they're left on accidentally by the?
That hockey sensor, um we believe it was malfunctioning previously and they have fixed it. And we did a test and while I was there uh waiting, you know, it was a two hour timer, they shut off while I was checking the lights, so it it works now.
And then if that stops, they can just let us know if we can get it fixed again.
Yeah, yeah, we have to wait for feedback if there's a problem. And the same would go for the lights that would be on the main field, they would have that same sort of mechanism. Um, other things to note, we had four, four vendors, our three official quotes are budget numbers and then the one is still pending. Um, and then Bill had some numbers with our basic electrical knowledge and it we came up with about fifteen dollars to run the field lights for a three hour period. But we definitely wanna have our path checked by Leonard Smith, so it's very low cost to run these lights based on the our. Um, so all that being said, we feel really good that we're gonna get the next grant should the state pass the budget. Um, we have great momentum, we have good community support, there's a couple of people who work neighbors of a park who aren't big fans of it, but they they can run a board and we can work with them to make sure it's a good project. What I don't wanna have is more stagnant on it and we wait for dominoes to fall in a certain order that don't necessarily need to be in that order. And the project doesn't happen as quickly as it could. So it'd be a real shame to have all this momentum, all this effort and all of a sudden it's twenty twenty seven, we're installing lights, it doesn't need to be that. So I know council is really set on not paying for this at all and I respect that opinion. Um, I respect the efforts you're putting forth to have Leonard Smith work with us and do the design work and helping to get the project done. So you are contributing, you're contributing with the grant efforts and that's respected and we have a good solution with the grants that we have. What I would ask is that you could consider approving the lights on the contingency that we get enough grant money. Don't wait till we get the grant and then wait for the next work session to talk about it, then another another council meeting or two, then it's the holidays. It could be it could become February before you're actually deciding, we could be behind the eight ball to actually get parts ordered, keep contracts out and get this thing done.
So I I don't think that that's a possibility we've asked. And it's for maybe, you know, can't hear, and they said they were gonna start fundraising and they haven't and their rabble also said the same thing. And they didn't, um, you know, when he met with Nancy and Scott and Neil and said that's her plan, um, it hasn't happened. And Carrie said the same, so I'm just afraid we say we're gonna pay for it.
I'm not asking.
Grand and the grandpa's through.
No, if they're gonna fall, so you don't put them in. Why can't why can't you approve that they're gonna go in contingent on getting the grant? If you fall one dollar short, I'll pack up my bag and leave. Or I'll go knocking on doors. But it'll be a real shame, which but I predict is gonna happen because things do work slowly in this borough. We're gonna get the grant, it's gonna take months to get the yes and we're gonna be told that it can't happen this year. Or not this year, but it it can't happen in time for the next seasons that need it. That would be a huge shame.
You know, I I've been pretty conservative viscerally, especially about this.
Several last, we just wanted to raise the taxes.
Excuse me?
Wait, let's stay.
What did you say?
Let's talk, go ahead.
I'm pretty conservative, especially with the lights, but I see no problem with approving the installation on a on a basis that is contingent upon obtaining funding outside of borough funds. There's there's no, I don't see any li- any particular viability
We just don't have.
For the borough if if we were to do that.
We just don't have control over those funds, so how can we?
It's contingent.
Wait, that's I would.
The word is contingent.
I I have a question.
Contingent.
So like, um, you've got, for some watching, who's giving you bids or or sort of?
Yeah, they're all coastars.
And they, that was one of my questions.
Also, yeah.
They're all coastars.
Yeah.
And um so this fourth one is pending. And do you expect to get that in the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, I expected it last week, so I have to just.
Do you think it's it's really right on the edge? With coastars, is it a different process um when once we get this or is it our usual process?
It's, you show a word project, you have to notify which coastars contract you to deal with. The prices are known because it presented you instead of the instead of the bidding process, the prices aren't gonna change that much.
So you don't advertise.
You don't have to advertise now.
Have all the time delays of advertising that we normally have with these kind of projects.
The topic is, I mean, coastars pre- prevent you from doing the thoughts you could have into the bidding process. But of the four, you're not legally obligated to pick the lowest bid either. You pick the vendor that meets the needs of your request.
Okay, so it's more flexible.
More flexible.
So so you expect to get that information there?
The fourth, oh. Yeah, I mean, I don't know, um, Sean, would we have to go notify all four and say we want a hard firm dollar now, like they might one or two might say, well, this was a budget number, we'd like to give a formal.
I think you need to request and especially some of them are all, you have your opportunity to say that you need to vote next month of time to go and price to get changed. Um, so they're all all council benefit, but it's the same number, so I get a fresh number for each year. Um. Is their proposals having? Then the other question is, is the plan though? And anybody that did wanna make sure whether they give us a proposal for targeting, if you're going to be if the intent is to try to expedite this, then you gotta make sure that those proposals include conduit and wiring, connection to the service and all of that, they can do that through sub. As far as.
Okay.
Um, and then everybody's got that all together. So that if any of those aspects are out, then we're back to the normal process we just talked about and add for a few weeks, open it up, you know? And that that takes funds, obviously, in the process.
What about um per uh donation design and?
So we need um, well, one of two things, either um if they would do that, it's part of their design, they typically don't typically ask the the ultimate customer, basically, um to give them a geotechnical or to design the face. Uh, they'll make an assumption. Um, you give the best price if you have a geotechnical for the exactly what they need, even killer.
Okay.
So I just, I have a question, our question is one, to approve the lights, do we need a resolution or what do we need to do to make that formal?
I do most.
I would definitely recommend a resolution.
You gotta like the conditions of the there's a point, one, point, two, point or whatever.
Okay, and then the second part of the question, it's a two part question. Uh, second part of the question, if the resolution is clear about the uh the approval being contingent upon an outside body raising the funds, is there any liability? Any financial liability to the borough? I don't stand with.
You could write your resolution to make sure there isn't financial liability, but I also wouldn't recommend passing a resolution without some sort of number.
Um, I already explained, is that if if we can do this, if you can get the information fairly quickly, say, within the next thirty days. We would be able to then, in my my proposal would be that we could then go forward with giving you that bit. Pending all these plug, you know, qualifications that it's all except, but if that one group is gonna do from beginning to end of the construction, you have so much more control.
Yeah.
That that would then give you nine months to for them to install and completely get them up and running for the next goalpost.
Right, the goal would be next summer to be doing installation.
And from what you've heard from them, are they giving you any kind of timeframe?
Uh, the most I've heard, the the one vendor said the lights they have on the shelf ready to go is the poles that take time. And I think they said eight to twelve weeks to get a, you know, a mill run from wherever they get the poles and.
Cause I was just thinking that if if you did it that way, part of this contract were that they have to commit to having it completed by by fifteenth August first, some something with some window.
Yeah.
Error and that that can we do that and you put that in the contract, um? That they're bidding, that they're guaranteeing that and we're, I don't know, is that what their punishment would be if they didn't?
Guarantee is wrong, Mark. Yeah, I mean, you can you can structure and time, right, there are things that are outside of the control, just like we have in our contracts, we go up there. If it rains every day for three months, we can't tell a paper, hey, man, you you need to be done. Um, but yeah, I mean, you can set guidelines for time, time.
Any else have questions or comments that I?
I just, you know, if you have a top line price, I just, I don't see a problem with passing a resolution. It's not, you know, obviously the fact that it's contingent upon ones from outside, I I don't see liability to the borough. I don't see a problem with passing a resolution ASAP.
Then if you have a problem?
I think it's been addressed. That. You guys are very worried. If I recall, I think my pressure recreation did the first playground, the sprinkler. That might have been one of those, maybe I'll take the rights before we support it, like trying to remember this.
I when I came on the record, the playground was already started and the track was like under construction. So that had already been approved and the splash pad was so, I was kinda just, hey, we need money and we went and hit people up and neighbor road checks. I don't think the borough contributed more than two or three thousand dollars towards the splash pad.
So what what how much we don't do now, that's some of those figures for this place?
Um, my new estimate is around eight thousand.
That's quite a difference.
Yeah. That's lean, I mean, you know, I, we'd have to, I don't know what all goes into the contingency number. I don't know if there's any, you know, you have twenty percent, I don't know if five is guaranteed or if that's just worst case, you know, sort of thing.
Yeah, that that's unknown, you get without doing a design, where conduit is, size of wire, just that kind of thing. Um. So, yeah, I mean, it's, I I don't know that there's a great concise answer to what else can can it seem, company says, it's timing too as well. With this grant in, in most scenarios, you build them a year or two later and then you've got places to play, so. Uh, so that's where time becomes a play also, is is this this project definitely costs, it's a different number in twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven.
Well, I think you want to, talking about inflation, I think you want to stick with at least a twenty percent contingency. And we we saw, I didn't waste my free at twenty, there was total contingency at forty percent, twenty for the vendor, twenty for council. And I got eaten up, it's down five percent that was.
I I think ultimately, as you get there, if you get, you know, everybody has the three foot coastars close. Those would be pretty close to the number that's like anything come up in construction, um really important. Most people for most of us to look at those as, go on in there. Um, sometimes we will see, it's just what they do, lighting vendors sometimes assume that they were doing all conduit, pulling all the wires, they're just putting a pull base, hole and fixture, and that number's not really legal. Um, we just gotta make sure we vet those in advance and it's very clear what the borough needs to do outside of them. Construction perspective, design perspective too, they'll do the design for their fixture, but maybe maybe not the conductor there back to the, you know, control room. Um, controllers are in there all that kind of thing, but at that point, you compare apples to apples, then that's the number really. As long as we've vetted the scope, that's the number, that contingency really goes away once you have a number.
Now, what happens if we take a bid, we award it to somebody with the, there's a caveat that it only comes to play at once we have a guaranteed running.
Well, we would have, I'm trying to to wipe away the time it'll take from, we get word on the grant, there's twenty days of mail. Scott signed stuff back to Harrisburg, then you, you know, I'm thinking worst case, then you think about it one more month. Then you decide and then we've lost time, I'm trying to get the decision in front of that time it'll it'll take.
So these people would be told we can't give them a guarantee until we know that we have.
Just maybe we'd be put out an RFP, I mean, I'd call the vendors, you know, tomorrow and say, get us a number including everything. Um, and then if we have to put out an RFP, it would be prices good through December thirty first, something like that and then.
Your fail safe would be at the beginning. Just say, say you pass this, you wouldn't actually sign their proposal and send it back till you have.
Right.
You you still have that, you know, cause then if we need to come back in January and I'm time whatever, but if you you passed a motion in December and said, okay, we're good based on this proposal up to X amount. And then that didn't happen, you come back and you any worry, I don't, I think.
It looks like.
Calls for that.
My my question is.
It's untypical.
What what grant are we are we applying for, what's the time frame?
We're waiting on LSA grant and it is tied to the state budget.
What is your thought for the LSA grant?
Uh, you're good, good, yeah, November thirty of the last year, twenty twenty.
So it just wasn't late, two months ago?
Oh, no, we're expecting word, we should have had word this month, but there's budget issues and hopefully the the budget issues are solved and that leaves room for our.
And how much is that?
We requested seven fifty, but I think we only need around four. With the money right, yeah, I know, I I wish the lights were. Checked under every stone.
Um, okay, is, does anybody else wanna voice hesitation or concerns about the idea of them proceeding and us being in a position once they have that answer to give that, let's give the go ahead. I didn't say that very well, but what exactly what we were, somebody else framed it in a.
The only other part would. The only other part would be if if you would allow Sean to put out an RFP for the geotechnical. Orings to do that design. So that way the vendors came in and they know what size foundation if.
And then this this.
And that could come out of money we already already received.
You have money for that, school give you money for that. Okay, cause we are gonna. We cannot do our ropes, I mean, we really are not in a position.
The grant for the USDA money would be.
Well, you didn't have that.
We have to have, we also have the two other grants up the three.
And I have RPA money.
I mean, and I think you're a resident, see them out first, someone to see them. You know, who may feel is the best contract or we do a resolution. He's the whole process.
Let's let's see where the number, let's, we can all the data and information to council soon as we get it. Whether it comes in at one time or comes in five different times. And then have one whole, most one whole action discussion and go from there.
I agree, we need to know what we're.
Yeah.
You need to know that you have a bit that is within our reason.
Yeah, right.
And stuff.
It's a solid bid and it's not gonna change. Yeah, we're not trying to trip the borough in spending, you know, see, you know, like, yeah, we we understand what you wanna do. And we're just trying to keep everything moving forward so that we can get the lights, cause the the bad, I'm just worried the bad precipitate. We all got the money for lights and then where the lights, where the lights, where the lights and. You know, we already had the news in the park on the condition of the grass, the next thing to be. Where the light money go, you know, that is.
It's like the parking lot that they don't have an HOP and it's in a couple of months and it's, who knows, how many more months.
It can be two things that have the beginning to the finish line is, these guys are gonna go back to those stores, fire, saying, give us some. Resource allocation perspective. We wouldn't do the geotechnical investigation, I'll just do it on the geotech. So it would be an RFP to. Geotech perhaps apart, but the level of effort to issue the RFPs. Few hours, that's a lot of. Um. But we may be, you know, doing the investigation, maybe. Two thousand, several thousand dollars. Uh, you would have to come back to council to say, okay. So we we the authorization would be for us, just to put our proposals out there. Uh, she isn't doing the investigation, isn't prepared, analysis, it's just giving somebody. Um, council could consider that in upcoming meeting. Cause ultimately, and somebody will have that too, um, they're gonna hedge their bet on their number. Um, the other part of it, the co-stars quote from, how do you get us to see what the exclusions are? If they're not doing all of the design, wire, and all that, we need to know that, is that'll be. You know, design cost, other lines, and those are the steps that you guys can really make a decision on what the other dominoes fall. Um, but to Tony's point, if we wait to do either of those until after we have the grant funding. There is going to be a significant delay because it's a process there to gather the rest of this information.
Sean, do you, in in doing the the geotech study, do you? Do you foresee or contemplate any permitting problems? We can run against EEP or anything like that.
No, it's. No permitting. One call, um. Hopefully we know where everybody is down there, um, but as far as outside agencies, there's no work to service departments. Straighten back, um, it should be actually built. These guys can know how to help.
So you would recommend going ahead with the ge- the geotechnical study sort of ASAP.
You recommended the bids for people to study.
Correct, find out what the number is, is this a few thousand bucks, is this ten thousand bucks, is this whatever soliciting costs for there? So again, you can make any decision, um, to get, put the geotech RFPs out as a few hours, and that that's one. Um, but you don't know that, so you use number, and then we know the bail note, the final status of price until they have it.
Actually, I I feel like I've learned in this past term is that like. Uh, your line about things moving slow, I empathize with because I think I didn't realize how slow things seem to move with like bids and. There's just such a process involved that it it delays. I might be in the minority here in a weird alignment, John, but like. I I guess I just don't see an issue with if we're saying we've raised X, we make it a X additional grand.
What if the Geo Farm comes back and says it's gonna be two hundred thousand dollars?
Like that's all.
On who?
To do the study.
Like.
But what if they say to even do the study, that's what they have.
Well, it won't be.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
Then it's over.
Yeah, and then.
And we, I go, I go home.
Yeah, then it would be.
I.
It would be a, this is like a strong word, is contingent.
Strong stop it.
So I I mean, it's, it seems like we're mostly in line.
I I I have a question, I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding this. So, the. Geotechnical study. Funds, uh, 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 wait, let me back up. Would Borough be responsible for the funds to pay for the geotechnical study? Okay, thank you.
I mean, they have money, I just.
I I have some money to pay for it and, you know, uh, Jennifer, if you wanna see, just get in the game, become the school, like I said, I'll walk down the street and I'll raise. Twenty-five thousand dollars for the geotechnical study by Saturday.
I'm just saying all these.
Three hundred fifteen signatures want this and I can get that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, they said they wanted all this, they they were gonna do all this and nobody's.
Yeah, but why would you go raise money if you knew that we had thirty-nine thousand in grants out, like I wouldn't.
What you're saying, what you're saying is true, but it's kind of not true because we were very strategic working with the school. As an alumni, as an RAB booster, as being here, I used to run the RIA. I've been through this with the lights a couple of times, it didn't make a lot of sense to have them run out, try to chase down forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars. In alumni donations until this ran its course. I think there's gonna be a future need because we can put the lights in, to be honest with you, we don't, the borough doesn't have to turn them on.
That's true.
My point is the school, the school that's going to an alumni and the athletic boosters are going to need to raise money in the future, I believe.
So I'm just worried, I'm just worried there's not gonna be, cause I've I've heard from politicians. If there's no movement on this budget, and so we're banking on this grant.
Yeah, if.
We're not hearing from council people in the third, they're not even close.
And then I rest with them, that.
We're on a moving pattern to get that.
Right, that's why I'm just saying, if everybody wants.
There's two consistent things I've heard for the last year and a half, the school has no money and the borough can't put any money into this. And we were very upfront in every meeting we had about that, we understand and we agree. Unless we can do it with. We have to come. So we understand and the school feels the same, you know, the school feels the same way, we know that, you know, like, my wife goes to every schoolwork.
She does, I see her online.
Yeah, so it's a consistent message and it's okay, we took it on knowing that, that's all right.
I would propose. That we. We would then get, draft a resolution. That would. That would express the council's approval for the installation of the lights contingent upon. All the factors that we discussed here.
I think that that that's a good idea, and I think before that, we'll get this information from you. And you'll do the RW, RW.
That means professor proposed.
What is it, what is the standard word?
Professor proposed.
Oh, that's all that's. I've been sitting here trying to see what words would go with RW. Uh, so, uh, so we'll get all that. And then we'll be in a position to vote on a, um, on a resolution, giving you the go ahead. Or we should work on the grass. But we can.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll call vendors, you've got the RFP, you guys got the resolution. Right, is this being recorded?
Give me a motion of authorization to.
I don't think so, I mean.
We said it in letter.
Yeah.
You you'll prove the price, I'll I'll provide some sample letter.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I mean, we're, you're just gathering information really for us at this point.
Yes.
Bringing us that information and then we formalize it into this.
And these guys will share any other exclusions that come along the way. Hopefully we don't, they should be able to do it. Subs of the coast guards. And that'll be the rule.
Cause we do all understand it. Take forever, it's something, he just, it doesn't take much. When you only vote once upon.
Yeah.
It just takes a long period. So this sounds good to you, you know, is everybody on board? Is Jamie? Yeah? Okay. There's a lot of purple.
Thank you.
Um. Right, you're okay?
I I have no problem, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make. I don't know anybody who feel like they could push down broke. Okay, all right, so let's get this to your side.
The playground. What an exciting project. That playground, uh, was like revitalized fifteen years ago. And it basically was the disassembly of the playground, repainting, a couple of new sliding boards. Since then, Rec Board has installed three new items. And plus a splash pad. And, um, with Scott and Leonard Smith's help, a grant was solicited. And we got the grant for park improvements, playground and the northern entrance to park that's by the school. And we just tried to execute on that, and you guys approved, I think, the, uh, the new north entrance and fencing at the last meeting. So the remaining pieces are the playground and the surface. Uh, for our, when our P went out for responded, uh, for the playground manufacturers, three of them came back with ported in place surface. And, um. That can be problematic, it's hard, it's it's hard to repair, you can't. Once it's poured, it's like asphalt, it's just gonna crack. Um. The fourth vendor came through with a turf option. And then we further, Rec Board further went out and found some other turf options. And that's where we stand now, so what is up on the screen is the new playground layout. Um, the darker green is all new playground equipment and new turf. The, uh, yellowish green is former mulch areas that can be eliminated and seeded with grass. That was John Gentile's biggest request of the project was to get rid of the mulch. He is, um, devouring mulch every year with his leaf blowers and his leaf cleanup, he's buying new mulch every year to put back. And it's a nightmare to to maintain and cut the grass and weed whack. Uh, so if we can execute this plan with all the equipment and turf and no mulch. He's gonna be the happiest parks superintendent in Patineers. Uh, also shown on here, I think one or two of the existing features in the gray. Are gonna be relocated slightly to get them closer so that we turf less area. That's a big part of the price. But the, uh, the big win here is the the fence and the gate came in lower than we had anticipated. And, um. The playground and our efforts with the turf came in at a number we could work with, which I think leads us a little bit of surplus in our total grand goals. So I think Scott has a sort of resolution to accept these two quotes for the playground and turf.
We can, this is the presentation, I'll vote on it next month, next week, two weeks from now, I'll say, go with this contract and this contract. Contract, contract A would be for the playground equipment, contract B would be for the forces to the landing surface.
Uh, I also wanna say the playground is spectacular. Drive down the street, look at playgrounds, it's not like anything you've ever seen. It's unique, it's special, it's it's unique to a point, there's gonna be some squirrels in this, uh, playground itself.
They have those, they do have a copy of the specifications.
It's very nice. Um, the the big feature, so playgrounds are broken down into, what is it, uh? Up to five years and six to twelve, there's like two age ranges. Um, so I I look at the small ones, I go, whatever, that's that's cute. But the the five to twelve is spectacular, it's on this right now, that thing is, you tell, twenty-nine. Feet high.
Twenty-nine feet high, yep.
Um, it's four levels of tower, it's a huge slide, it's all safe, and these guys know what they're doing, there's fencing and different things. Parents from the bottom can see their kid at the top, they're not like in this giant, uh, structure just hidden. Uh, and it's gonna be amazing, I mean, I can't imagine what that's gonna look like and how much, um. Enthusiasm will be for parents and kids who go down there, and the stuff we have is 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 fine, but this is gonna. Put the park in a new category, so it's really exciting that we have this opportunity. It's all inclusive for disabilities and people who, um. Can't use the same parts of the playground that other people can. That was standard across every vendor.
Maybe I just didn't understand, so what what are my options if I'm in the wheelchair, like, I have the ADA swings. But what else can I do at the park?
Um, you could reach a lot of the lower parts of the. Of the playground, um, this vendor particularly talked a lot about ramps and different things and. Some vendors actually, you know, I probably wouldn't say this the right way, but some vendors. Make. Structures for people with disabilities that almost excludes them. Because it's like, here, you play, you play on this little thing over here, you don't get to play on this. And with the exception of the height, obviously, if you're a builder, you're not gonna get up to the top. Uh, this they field includes, you know, more well around their, um, way, everybody, all all types of kids.
So my options are to like touch and manipulate things for it to go on the swings, just people.
Uh, yeah, I mean.
Well, there's there are, there is ramping, it it can.
But we'll get them out.
Yeah, but you're not gonna get a.
You're not gonna get to the fourth level or the third level.
Yeah, yeah, I just, that's.
Yeah, these are all ADA, these are all specifically designed with ADA compliance to to make them all inclusive, yes. It's best, it's best thing.
Is there a pro to not doing any sort of surface where the splash pad is right now on cement? And I I haven't seen any other local splash pads with cement, I see a lot of like that, like squishy kind of ground, it's not turf, it's more like.
Yeah, that wasn't a part of the project, uh, we did have a splash vendor come in and I said. For under two hundred thousand dollars, we could really do this real nice, and I said, well, thank you, but that wasn't even, it's not on the budget, we have zero budget.
Yeah.
We we, the last splash pad we built, Sophia, for fifteen thousand, I remember.
Yeah.
Um, few string budget, things have changed. Um, everyone's saying that thing, the only thing you could do with it is demolish it and build a new one, but the the price tags are way different, and that's what, when this is done. We would then pivot towards how do we. Phase two would be fixing the splash pad, it certainly could probably be a little bit bigger, still fit in that same area and have that kind of surface.
And then, um. I'm assuming like non-permanent structures just aren't in this, so like there would still be like benches and.
Yeah.
Right now, there's like a. Good bench in there.
Yeah, all those are gonna be saved and or replaced.
I think we'll be putting in a gate too for John.
That was separate, yeah, John was gonna put a, uh, a wider gate at the park to get his equipment in. For coming around us. But that was like thousand bucks. So I I don't have anything else prepared for that.
That's fine.
Give you the two thousand.
Right. And then, so the footprint didn't change at all.
Didn't need to.
End of the track. Oh, I just wondered, is there a plan for the old equipment for it to go somewhere else to one of the schools or to?
I don't think, I mean, that's like liability things. I don't think, and plus the the poles are in concrete, I don't know that they're really solid poles.
They were, they were achieving, they're almost standing on life span. It's what you call it, it was.
Oh, there we are. I I I have some questions.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, what are a net spinner and a frame net?
Uh, the. So the 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 spinner is on one pole and it's, uh, kind of like a, like a top shape. It's actually like a top, it's like cone shaped this way and then this. And it, uh, you get on it and spin it, hang on real. Real, it's like a merry-go-round in the air.
Oh.
That's already in place, that's been there.
Oh, okay, okay, so let's see.
And then the the other climber is just a big geometric shape that you can climb up all different ways and it goes probably like maybe sixteen feet near.
Okay, all right, thank you, and then, um, I noticed that there were going to be galvanized staple spikes being used. I noticed that there were going to be galvanized staple spikes being used. Um, will those be covered in some way to prevent injuries like? So that somebody who's walking is going to trip over them or?
Yeah, I think that's how they hold the, the turf down or maybe even the subsurface, cause I know the turf gets a, like a cushiony. Uh like if this was just, this was field turf for like football, they don't talk about turf, they talk about turf. It would be uh, this is extra soft, so if you fall off the playground, you know, you, this absorbs the impact. Versus field turf is just over sand and gravelly, like.
So the galvanized spice won't be.
They're not sticking up, they're.
Okay, they'll, they'll be under, um, under another layer.
I don't know exactly where they are, they're either holding the subsurface down or the turf carpet itself and.
Okay.
They're not intended to come up.
The lines still stuck, right? I was gonna ask that.
Uh, I think so, I mean, it was, it's part of the splash pad.
It's part of the splash, I think the, the, the relocation.
Our historical pieces.
Have a work session down there, we can all date it. Any other playground questions?
And the entrance, the entrance, what are the, what are the, started that, did they wait for spring or?
I don't know.
Actually, contracts have been part of the contract and we need to create a signature reconstruction meeting. Weeks, um, so um I would imagine it's probably a spring project.
Does this take your O six hundred?
Uh, no, I don't think so. Um, so there could be a couple tweaks later out. One of the first quotes, this, this selected vendor came through with the smaller kids thing was a little bit bigger. And we're trying to work on numbers, we cut that down to a smaller structure. So uh we have to double check and see if we can go back to that larger one and see how that looks. Or um, there's other needs within the upper park, specifically deck hog, the, it may be. There's money here that could help our situation there too. Bathrooms are, this I'm talking, if we have extra, it's gonna be like fifteen thousand or twenty thousand extra, bathrooms are probably eighty, ninety, two hundred thousand. That's not purpose. I don't have.
We've received, we've received something to stay close.
Looks good.
This will be two extra times because the. I'll be sure of all the data.
Did you have me a double check it, look good?
Yeah.
So I can turbo check. Any other part questions?
No, I, there's a lot of time and energy that I've sent to all of this, I really, I'd be all appreciating.
Yeah.
Definitely.
One other thing I did wanna say, um. Who's been across the bio to see the new line painting?
Yeah.
It's really nice, and I think that I'm a part of the VOP committee through the Rec Board. And I think if not for the work that VOP had done to identify, I don't think Penn Dot would have repainted it that way. So I know we have our differences on traffic light and that's a whole separate discussion and it's not even coming down the pipe, but. Through all the work and all the fighting and all the discussions on lights, you gotta tie it up, it's gonna slow people down for si- more safety, you can travel on those shoulders. It's really, it's all, it's all needed, it was just paint, the lines made differently, so I think it's really good. Teenage drivers now, and those lanes are so narrow, so it's a little more, so it's good, so.
No, it looks good. Okay, well, thank you both, Bill, Bill, you wanna talk?
What he said. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny, uh thank you both and all of your committee for all this work. It is a big, big project.
Burrowed in here.
Oh, yeah.
Wow, I'll do my best to speak to that next week. Um, we're actually gonna handle projects, nearing completion here. Um, first of which, uh, and two, what we think will be dog parking.
So it's like.
Work substantially complete, um. Parking lots there, trails there, that's a theory. Um, so this would be like we talked last month, this is how they just created the grass, it has been seeded. Um, restoration is all that's left. Scheduled, to be scheduled contractor, lots of items, I can think.
It's, was it waiting for like the grass to be seeded? Kind of, even if we had like a soft unofficial opening, are people gonna be using this year at all, or saying, no, it's never really closed until springtime?
Um, I, I mean, I have policy that's in here, but it's going to be muddy, you know, it. We're not going to be like, don't think we're gonna be able to. Educated cover. Now, I think once we open it, it's gonna be hard to unring that bell to get people to stay off of it, to get grass to grow. Um, so I think best would be to have a true real opening after the spring growing season, once we've got.
So they provide just a seeded area with solid washing combos and stuff like that, or is it supposed to be just?
So they've hydro seeded for now.
Okay.
Um, they owe to be grass to grow.
Okay.
Needs that business as they need to be.
This one's a lot, it's.
Yeah, I guess we, we can't close it too cold, but I don't think I would be favorable to, to close it then to.
And what ended up at the border um between the neighbors and the park, we ended up with. Fencing and, and planting.
Yes.
And they're both done. I can, I'll tell you in a couple of weeks, see.
Yeah. There's privacy fence there and then um all the plantings are done.
And that can stand a chance to get established, that's. And so then you said the last pay request number three. Is that, that will finish it off other than a reserve for, no.
Pay request three is just um for the trees being installed in items like that. Fencing and paving will be in pay request number four. And then there'll be a final payment, like Sean said, once the drainage was policed and the grass.
That, 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 that's all. So are we, I was now, like, we pay this for it? Can we then ask for partial?
Well, I guess, the state requires to see the check cash, so once we approve the payment for number three, we're gonna give them all the preliminary work, sign contract. The insurance certificate that they, that protects the CFA. Illegal dance, all that paperwork, and then, and you, we're gonna be one day pay request with invoice number one, number two, and three. And then get that home, so then we do add a number four later. Yeah, but we got, they, they don't do any pay request to see if checks done or vexingly the checks done, they didn't state.
So we might get the money this year, but.
We, we've identified the budget that we're gonna get some of the money, yes, we have seventy-five percent or fifty percent, very good.
Dog park, um. That was the railing, another one, kind of theory finish line here, um. Hey, art group moved last week, we're working issue on this today contractor. Uh primarily being of items, um, they're substantially complete there. And they were questioning them. Um, so that'll, that'll need to be a, say the December item or payment to them. Um, that may be, assuming they can address all these posses items, that may be. Um, other side of the coin, they're called which trails, stormwater improvements are awarded by council.
What are those?
Four, thank you. Yes, four of those were awarded by councils uh last month in COG. Uh, that was, that was, that was. Um, next item with. Number nine, ten. Uh, those are projects with advertised bid openings, uh both opened late this week. Um, small water and sewer, sewer lining project, um. Initially scheduled for today, um. Screen up with the pity, I have more, so that guy moved Thursday. Um, we'll have a bit of a, that, the three big third and multiple also being. Some of those for consideration, um, you'll know what they are before your meeting, discussion, or show the next one.
What, what is gonna be their number? What's, what's in the? I, I, I know there's a bar, this, but is, there's more?
Yeah, so it's, it's the, the island porch of, it's realigning the crosswalks. They cross in a perpendicular manner.
Lights that go with them?
Yeah, moving the um like the pedestrian signal that's closer to the bridge, moving it towards the actual intersection. Yes, um, yeah, those, those are the three disgusting stuff. Porch off, fixing the alignment, and putting the rapid red flash on beacon, pedestrians.
Where, where are we standing, eight from Pete's?
Um, they've finished. Per turn hand, um, a signal permit in the H O P. Yeah, so it's just out there, as soon as we get them back, um, that could be rewarded, that, that'll be a start to spring construction. You are the name, paper of record, she is.
We use trip, it's called trip web, the trip equals, it's a trip review.
Okay.
Most likely they show up in the values dispatch.
Yeah.
Or on the web, they're on their website, but from reading standpoint, they use the values dispatch, you don't wanna read it in the newspaper.
And if I was a contractor, wanted to, you know, say out of top of. Or bit opportunities, rock here, ask where, where was, place here. So, yeah, so formally, they're, they're. Contractors all subscribe to uh just plan rooms and aggregate these. Um, the, the other thing that we use, um, these are all posted, it's called classes, it's a mobile building platform. Um, contractors sign up for that, they, they sign up basically. Pay was put that. Putting storm service water line, and then it lets you know when certain projects of that description are uploaded. You can whatever G R A M, so, so they get it then. Um, item third. Is the twenty to twenty-five road program, uh so hopefully everybody's been by giving a washing. Storm sewers paving all done on Washington, so um.
On second coat.
No, no, they're definitely.
Just fire them where?
Yeah, there, there are two layers of vessel, they're both installed, but they actually did it the same day. Yes, they built one day and long day, um. Racing to beat the rain too, which they did, um, in darkness.
Thanks, little success.
Um, crosswalks. He's part of the, they'll do that, um, and striping is still to come, come back and do that.
They use a sub catcher.
Yeah, we, most likely parking like any.
They're, they're called PLP, and they're, they do mostly, they're essentially doing pendant projects, right, on the park. Yeah, they're all, they're all up in the park, made in the city or not doing some.
They're um, they're thermoplastic as well, and there is a weather coating for that, um, can't be too cold. Uh, so that would be, you know, but ultimately, they're gonna be striping. Um, and then where they're working going now is the trail and slant park, um, just started there today. Said yesterday, it's on Tuesday, it started there today, Monday, um. Be, few days there, and they should be able to this meeting.
So I, I have people that, who now live here, Washington. Um, there were problems with water back off on the sidewalk at Seventh Street and one on Fifth Street that. Everybody puts the cones out all the time. Water comes down. This and the curb would go down the sidewalk, so staying out of the street. And um, Scott checked it, and said that he already did, mapped that out and already designed it. So I get a whole bunch of credit. Even though you did it six months ago, I didn't know, so I just said, oh, go talk it, so I got, I got.
Yeah, and I watched it in a rainstorm the next day and everything drained perfectly.
They won't be very good.
Yeah, I mean, it was good about the storm, so it's all.
Plus with the storms, we've got the water underground and off the street.
Yeah, that was a big difference, I'm sure, but even still, you know, that, the fifth straight one was bad for the. That's where.
Um, yeah, I know a little bit of weight to get there, but I'm, why are we for here? Um, then they'll finish up with the park and close the mouth, they'll likely have budget perspective to, they'll likely have a carryover. That's the big step actually, um, as far as long building projects, designs. Any questions, which can counsel any other?
There's no, I, I know it's, right, she, the, that little ADA traffic. We've got, we've, we've resolved the problem.
No, that's my notion.
The county's cleared off the.
Yeah, they're, they're from France and, county approved.
I mean, the.
E P, they have approved the environmental.
Yeah, I'm a lot aware that he's given us authorization to do it. Um, it may have happened, I just may not know, our dilemma there though is favorite project, um. I don't wanna admit now, it's gonna have to be.
December, January.
Yeah. Uh, is it game, strike to.
And I believe in the email citation, I think Gordon was, the, the lens and representative to the.
You may, you may also be.
Right. Do you wanna mention it while placing quick?
Yes, yeah, so we met with, um, so I met with a developer here last week. Uh, with regard to the rain garden that's front of all of, um. Go back to the drawing board a little bit, so as, as everybody knows, it doesn't really function. Supposed to infiltrate the water, um, there's nowhere convenient really to pipe the water to, probably. Um, just more service are involved and they're waiting on the hill, so, um. They're going to go back to drawing board here a little bit, see if there's a way to eliminate it. Um, they think that they have enough water controls from a rain volume perspective already there. Um, they can get rid of it, maybe just turn it into a rain garden, but just some sort of aesthetic feature there. Um, there's a little bit of complication where to take the water from the front, you're gonna go to Penn Dot. Gonna go to D P to provide their permit, um. But their, their plan now is to be rid of their rain garden, like a combination.
They get, they get one point for him. Oh, sensing another ground, paint, first break, they're gonna fill and then first laid out.
So they do, if, if they're rear of the plan, you go to the end of the cul-de-sac. And then down behind the lots, kind of towards the left of the cul-de-sac, there, there's a huge underground tank, they're probably. Next to the size of where we're sitting here, um, that takes the vast, vast majority of the money. The only water the rain burden takes is the limit that comes out towards the front. The rest of the plan goes the back, it's controlled, there's actually one live control, subsequent one, and it's big, underground tensionary. It gets piped out the back.
Right now, the rain garden is functioning as rain garden. Could, could a small tank like that be alternative?
Well, you, you the same issue there though, there's nowhere to help them to. And if, if, if their issue up front is the soils don't have any infiltrative capacity, water just sits in there. You could have the same scenario with underground tank of. First couple of times it would rain, it'd fill up, and then there's nowhere to go, and then it pumps out the top and out on the streets.
What's that, clay layer, something under there?
Was pain, yeah. He he told us, um, and we didn't see it in person, they they and they said they tried to dig out. So the plans were to dig out two feet and then you put in this special soil. They went down even below that. Certainly not for a total of the try to give to something that may infiltrate. So, um. It it's it's not going to be. All that simple when they solve, and then they're looking at. Other than you can get the mic to the department. Both departments actually pendot. And the D P, um, with our space district and supervise apartments there, um. So.
Oh, yeah, just. Put in another storm line and storm sewer.
It's a good way to know them.
It's it's the 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 closest storm bags that there's actually wave lane.
Right, it's required.
There's nothing wrong with.
And it begins, it begins with.
First, if it's right around the there, the first catchback is around the wave lane. So that's eleven, and they're saying, Oakmont Place comes out across from eleven street, that's ten, nine, eighth. Ten, nine, eight, she gets it passed here. Yeah, but they kept down, they kept down there, I mean, I even drove to a four inch pipe behind the sidewalk, but. Yeah, and I think probably the private right away, maybe, but I don't know.
Yeah, they wanna go that route, and they try, because there's still gonna be problem. If if users for people are in pendot's right of way, pendot will let them discharge the stream. When it then. A public superextension, stormships that are real in the street could be um, very expensive.
And would they charge the builder for that, or would that have to fall on the minister?
Not a lot else, yeah, developer.
That's all the bulk.
Yes.
You could take it across underneath to eleven street down where the. Eleventh is. Read it down there. She had a sense of cross hall.
Yeah, they get across all.
They get across all, I wonder whether Sarah's house, what they do, their driveway might not work.
It was a fine, well, it was a meandering, private driveway, it's a little more leniency than a public road.
Oh, okay.
Accret, yes, okay.
And rain garden, I really think that's misleading, I you go by, I mean, I think they.
Well, it's it's part of the.
Swamp, that's swamp, yeah.
It was an option for best management practices, um. A lot of optimism in the design, you know, paper is supposed to work, but just to the soils, they cooperate.
Yeah, you rarely see, I understand what they did, isn't thought of these. So you can rarely see these design new penetration people. Always an overflow or some sort of some.
And council, like I remember, is the first plan was to take the sanitary show lines out to the manhole in front of Holden Road. But that was gonna take at least a week to construct and hold the road. Two week without without a etour, yes. So they found it right away from the president in the backyard and went found the borough store line that way, found easier. And the storm plottings behind the plant, which I'm describing. Connects to an existing storm line oriented in that neighborhood on on um. Hook place. So the existing infrastructure there. That's why they can connect it.
Any questions, sir?
Yeah.
Any questions for you? Can you close your gap, sir?
I do, uh, your uh, your water authority wastewater treatment facility. Uh, the renovation. Uh, required to temporarily destruct these maintenance agreements, uh. We're having pushback from S P E D.
Yes.
Regarding that, um. And and long, long story short, uh. We will have a easement to uh, uh, approve uh, at your next meeting, um. I don't know how into the weeds we want to get in this, but yeah, engineer. I don't know, you guys, someone found a uh.
Statue.
Uh, found a uh. A privately owned stormwater line that was uh. Illegally on our property, is that correct?
It was on the property where the salt point is. We have a catch facing system back there with fifteen inch concrete pipe. It's been on our maps, but we didn't know the connection occurred until they started excavating and discovered it.
Uh, and and that that uh. Catch just brought out from S P E D's property. Uh, it it filters it all, it's structured, so in exchange for uh. A temporary obstruction agreement, uh, we're gonna grant S P E D. D a permanent stormwater easement to allow their their water to continue flowing our facilities.
It's for all construction easements. Have to complete.
Yes, I can answer it, the sec, the other one that.
Completely execute.
The sped, what do we call it? The sped per, the sped temporary church easement was emailed to me today, showed all the recorded D's information, the originals in the mail to my office. Last week or week before that, we already had the Hillhead House easements, separations in place as well, too. So, they're done, they were done, and we told you they were done, it was just a matter of getting.
Then we had.
And actually, yes, and the permanent easements in your packet, and it's still.
Signed and.
Yeah, but what the other, the action I meant, the council meetings, we're authorizing Nancy to sign off on easement. Then we'll keep a record of this as well.
Yay.
I have three quick things for executive session. Uh, but other than that, any questions?
Where's the, where's the board?
We never.
I thought it was running in, so. We could sort of say it before you bugger, but yeah.
Well, well, sure, thank you.
Okay. Um, so, uh, budget.
Yes, council, I wanted to have a little thirty thousand foot level discussion this evening about the budget, we've had. Uh, staff led informational meetings twice now, and I'm expecting probably the third one, November tenth, depending on the conversation goes. But a lot of this discussion tonight is to provide some clarity on how we operate with the budget. Now, we've been explaining things to you, uh, that kind of we've we've gone through in this budget year. Nothing dramatic, but it's just a, it was a hiccup in twenty twenty five, it was the start of it, so we'll go through that. So. If we recall, council, for the first time in many, many years, we raised the military from three point seven three to four point nine five. The goal. Of this was to continue our aggressive work with the infrastructure of the borough. Why I always call the unsexy thing, stormwater management. Sand, brick road repairs, and now we're for a real program. In twenty twenty two. We authorized Lennin to do a comprehensive road study of the borough, both brick roads, pavement roads, outways and such. We came up with a plan that showed us doing a a twenty year plan, basically based on our three hundred seventy five thousand dollar commitment annually. That's what this infrastructure tax was going to do, was put our money, follow that plan. And for most part, we haven't. Um, roads may get bumped up a year sooner depending on the weather. Or condition of road may get passed over for a year based on this condition, didn't wear away as fast. We use the term mills, and the mill against taxation, and if how Pennsylvania communities to their property taxes, school district does it, so does the county. But to give you an explanation of what the value of Oakmont Borough is, one mill. Of Oakmont Borough is equal to six hundred twelve thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars. Because the overall value of the borough, what the county says is every piece of taxable property in Oakmont Borough collectively. Is six hundred twelve million, four hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred fifty five dollars. So. You can always sit there saying, mill, we're, when you, when you have six twelve. You can determine like what a half a mill is, what a quarter mill is, that sort of thing, so. When we did this raise to four point nine five. We were expecting an additional six hundred eighty eight thousand dollars in property taxes. That was a bit test on what twenty twenty four's number of the twenty twenty five numbers would be. And then twenty twenty five happened. And what happened was, first of all, the April windstorm that came through Oakmont Borough and other communities around us. The. I don't like using generation, generalizations, but in this case, the entire shade tree by shade room was blown apart. Both emergency tree repair, contracted tree repair, plant printed, plant print. Pruning and clipping. There were trees that looked like they weren't damaged, actually lifted out of the ground and put back in the ground with voids, and so eventually they were gonna fall over. So just the storm event itself was a hundred eighty four thousand dollar impact to the borough. That was unanticipated, was not budgeted. Uh, we had ongoing litigation. That was carried over from twenty twenty four. Combining both the borough solicitor fees for the firm as well as the zoning hearing board soliciting firm. We were thirty seven thousand dollars over budget. Almost thirty eight thousand dollars over budget, and while it has tempered, based on some recent court decisions, it's still gonna go on. A little bit of twenty twenty five. The big one is the conditional news approval that was granted for local room brewing. And the most recent appeal, the ordinance that was passed about the parking ordinance. And was heard at the zoning hearing board and upheld. Uh, we had that, we we started the contract of twenty four to demolish a building on Dallas Street that was abandoned and a tree growing through it. We initially had community development block grant funding for it that was retracted from the county. After they had the. Incorrect belief that pincy banks don't interest in the property, they didn't. But we were always starting to build a contract, but we couldn't get the grant money back. At the same time, they did asbestos mitigation, but that was a twenty two thousand dollar lift. In order to get rid of the structure, it was already falling apart, and neighbors are just looking at it tired of it. Um, with that windstorm, we had twelve thousand dollars aside with repair, and the the trees that were rough, we really destroyed sidewalks. No fall of property, but none of the stuff we could turn into home insurance, so we were, you know, we wrote it, we fixed it, that's what we cost. And then a piece of property on Ann Street, which was the former former nursing home, which lost its license in twenty twenty three. Miami lost its license to State Department of Health and County Department of Health revoked their licenses based on the conditions. The building received, that number is a three year tax abatement, forty four thousand dollars from Oakmont Borough's tax coffers. School district, I think, was almost nine hundred thousand dollars, if I got the numbers correctly, so it was an impact that no one expected. So of that six hundred eighty eight thousand dollar uptake, we were supposed to get important infrastructure. Three hundred thousand, almost half of the mill went out the door to all these costs to cover them. Only left us with about three hundred eighty seven thousand dollars, as I say here. Forty four percent out that went out the door just so we could operate, and the remaining fifty six went here. Which was incorporated a budget, we've used the budget, but it's not to the extent that we wanted. And what it also does is impact our end of year cash, so we can use to carry over things. Quick refresher. Allegheny County's four point seven, three mills. Riverview School District's twenty four point eight four, and Weeden County are four point seven five, so. I could get a dollar graphic to work, I'm not good at that type of art. Almost, almost fourteen cents out of every dollar either goes to Allegheny County or Oakmont Borough. And property taxes. And seventy two cents of every dollar goes to Riverview School District, it doesn't round up to a dollar because they couldn't get the rounding to work. But that's as close as you can get. Historically, it's usually school district, county, and Oakmont, but because of their their discussions at the council, county, county, county council level. They backed it down to four point seven three, or we'd be the same. So what you see in front of you in your packet, here's a summary of the general of all the budgets, um, each budget itself may have anywhere from. Two to five hundred lines of contents. We summarize, we summarize everything based on their first, the first three digit codes you see. So we're fine right now, general fund is, you know, we're showing an income revenue stream of six point one million dollar. We're currently showing expenditures of five point nine at the end of twenty twenty six. But the one line I want to show you is. The annual interfund transfers, in twenty twenty three, we, you know, we transferred a million dollars to all the other accounts that operate in the borough, which we're gonna talk about. And then in twenty twenty four, based on some things changing, we went to seven hundred fifty eight. Back up to a million dollars in nineteen, excuse me, twenty twenty five. But again, the way the budget's written today and proposed at the staff level is. We're dropping down to five hundred forty seven thousand dollars in interfund transfers to Kerr Boulevard Project, Parks, Roads. And we'll talk about that in the next page. We do show a fund balance. Uh, in excess of a hundred seventy seven dollar, a hundred seventy seven thousand dollars right now, so that means we're gonna be fine. But that's right now what we have to play with, unless we adjust some of the transfers going to the other funds. Any questions so far? Again, trying to keep us at thirty thousand feet, we meet again, we'll get back to people. What do you have? One of the bigger budgets we have is the library fund. Uh, they're showing a revenue stream of about six hundred twenty thou, six hundred twenty thousand. Currently staff is showing a three hundred eight thousand dollar transfer, which historically was the number which included the bond amount. Uh, it's turning into now as part of their operations. They do get a local lot of state and county aid, that's what that represents in the. Three, five, five, and three, five, seven numbers of, you know, four, forty three thousand and one hundred fifty four thousand, five hundred dollars. And they do get a nice chunk of change when it comes to donations and contributions to the borough historically in the. Above sixty, you know, except for twenty twenty five, for the most part, it's in the sixty thousand dollar range. Again, these are donations mostly for op, all this is operational money, this is not. Putting money aside, this is for operations, salaries, homeowner, um, insurances, that sort of thing. Our expenditures to the positive are showing, you know, most of it's administration, we also have a proportion of it for library use. Be qualified for rad funding, again, it's not shown in that four fifty six number, but it's in there in greater detail. We need about seventy thousand dollars of this budget dedicated to library operations. Everything else is wages, insurances. Can't the cost for the heating ventilation system, utility bills, that sort of thing. So we are showing the surplus of right now thirty eight thousand dollars. And just about twenty three dollars left in cash at the end of the year. The next budget, the next biggest budget, the Borough Sewer Fund, which is an enterprise fund, it's not reliant on tax. Taxes is reliant solely on wages and rates, on rate strikers. Sorry, Brian. You look at me, you know, so I I thought it was wages accidentally. So we just recently increased our wa, our rates by three percent again, you know, sixty four dollars per thousand, then eleven thousand, eleven dollars per thousand after that. Um, the sewer, the the garbage collection bill goes in here too, but that's, you know, that doesn't count in this budget, this is specifically operating the plant. Our commitment again is still towards the infrastructure, which is three point nine million dollars, and that is our annual work of three hundred thousand dollars in sanitary sewer cleaning. Maintenance and repair. So that the system out in the field, its treatment, bringing sewage to the plant is fully functional and operational. Um. You see the two numbers, debt principal, debt interest, that is the. Portion of the sewer fund paying for series A one and A two, which is the big one, we've taken out to do the sewer project. And uh, the interfund operating transfers, that's showing us moving our money around to cover the parting expenses as our EMS provider. As well as contributing for a future vehicle that we'll entitle to in twenty twenty seven. There is a surplus, but based on the fact, there's not gonna be much, much left over to to do any transfers in the fund, again, this is an enterprise fund. It's mostly a cash in, cash out basis. As between this and the property tax base fund. The Boulevard Project, they get the responsibility of the Boulevard pro, Boulevard Project as committee. Is the upkeep and maintenance of the corridor of Allegheny Boulevard, Allegheny Avenue from College, actually, sorry, from Plum Street all the way to Holton Road and maybe a little bit above that. Predominantly, it's the landscaping, maintenance, the walking trail, the irrigation, the lighting of the trees, and maintaining of the, both the clock tower. As well as the train station down below Allegheny Avenue. The biggest improvements the committee have brought to the table in the last recent years has been the change of the lights from gas to L E D. And currently, the handrail that Sean met, handrail guard was that Sean just mentioned. Uh, the handrails and guardrails will be uh, paid for through the remaining balance of the series B one, which was taken out at the same time as the series A. And. The next big project will be some more beautification projects, we understand from their capital projects, they want to improve upon the. Walking signage that you see currently. Along the path, am I correct about that, Brian? Is that what I read? Yes, thank you. And they are uh, working on some of the landscape enhancements at the intersections. Uh, Pennsylvania and Washington is that, as we see. The Kerr Museum. There is the aspect of the Kerr Museum with the borough, it's the building, the property responsible for its maintenance and upkeep. As well as the utilities going to that building, that's under the general building of thirty two thousand dollars. In that thirty two thousand dollars, there's a project slated for the the foundation, which is the membership of the Kerr itself. That they need to take care of for us, they are going to do the second phase of interior stormwater management. Those some pump and French drain on the inside foundation wall. And they also need to replace the boarding, I don't know how much to extend the boarding of the reaperon porch on the principal structure on the property. In an agreement we've established with the foundation, they became a little more independent, is when our. Checking account for this fund goes below ten. Twentyish thousand dollars, we can solicit funding from the. Kerr Museum to replenish that fund, we are still showing us giving our typical fifteen thousand dollar operating transfer fund. But you see under their contributors and donations. We're asking the committee to cover the costs of the repairs of the building itself. Or our fund be depleted, that's where you see the eighteen thousand, one hundred dollars. Again, they're showing um, a balanced budget at the end of the year, with a little bit of money left over, who wanted to put it aside, but not in the service. This is when it starts to get interesting. The first, and now I actually think it's the Capitol Parks budget, and it's gonna be the Capitol Ruins budget, where we're having challenges, um. We have a list of projects that are in the pipeline for the borough, do mostly, mostly on my grant, and I'll share, I can share, I've shared that, that agree with you before. Um, we can't do all the projects at once. Obviously, this bu, this budget showed the minimal amount of grants, projects we can do, which is closing on Chateau Beach. The fairway stormwater management program, which if we don't do, nothing else happens to Dark Hollowways until it's completed. And the fifty fifty matching repair and buffer. That number may change in expenditure because there are a lot of in kind proposed numbers. Meaning that instead of spending five thousand dollars to go get the. Bushwhacker contractor to come clean the knotweed out, we can do the work internally, but that the committee has to tread into an actual dollar amount. So our contribution forty four thousand may drop by five thousand dollars and it may drop even more when it can identify board. That's a conversation Brian are going to have with them on the tenth, I believe. Where we're meeting with the committee to get down to the weeds of this. Other large significant grants is a bridge for the borough's bike path, the crossover Plum Creek near the Foligno property, which comes out of Plum Street. We actually had until twenty twenty seven for the grant expires, we're going to consider delaying that one more year. Most of our costs is going to be the bridge and the abutments and the abutments really are refined, who's may have to tweak the engineering standpoint, I think is what we said. Um, but because we have time, as I commented earlier, it's a bridge to nowhere right now. We can wait another season before putting yes, man. It's a pedestrian bike bridge. Though essentially at the end of Creekside Park where the scoreboard is, there's the old rail line abutments there. That go over to the other side of Plum Creek and it's right at the sharp bend on Plum Street for coming in from Plum Street side. Right now, it's all, it's it's the right way that's there. Um, from our understanding, the property owners on the other side of the bridge, which are in Plum, have no issues with the bridge, but again, right now they don't go anywhere. So. There are other grants out there we're looking at. Obviously, there's, there's another Dark Hollow Woods grant that's sitting out there that's that's was approved. But that work is contingent upon getting the stormwater control at the top of the hill in the Fairways neighborhood. There's bridge repair inside of Dark Hollow Woods that um typically we save money aside for for um. Girl or boy scouts, they have to go for their final evaluation whether it be an Eagles Eagle Badger or Gold Star. We have money in there for buy the materials, they just have to coordinate the construction. Um, there's some other park grants that are sitting out there we're waiting on. And this budget, just for a caveat, does not include anything related to the football field lights. The reference in the bigger budget, but from a summary standpoint, we're not showing that revenue coming in yet because it's not a realized project yet. So I just want you to take a look. Right now, we're showing a deficit of a hundred and eighty two thousand, sorry. Hundred eighty two thousand dollars. And we are showing just a hundred twenty four thousand dollar transfer from the. General fund over to the Capital Parks. If you're calling back your mind, we just said we have a hundred seventy seven thousand dollars saving general fund that we can play with, but that's just sitting out there right now. Capital Roads, which is the fund that's dedicated solely to the stormwater paving, brick road infrastructure. We're still showing our commitment towards the highway construction projects, which the numbers are four thirty eight. That's the twenty twenty six road program. I think Sean, you're scheduled to meet with Josh in the street department to review. Roads that may have been pushed over to twenty twenty six and anything else that's coming up. Uh, we still have some dedicated funds here for brick road repair. I know last year. We had segregated funds for Allegheny Boulevard repairs and what we call neighborhood brick repairs. Uh, at the staff level, we're always trying to create the argument that you look at just doing Allegheny River, Allegheny Boulevard repairs. Skip the neighborhoods for another season and see how we can go from there. Um, not curb to curb repairs, but maybe focus on some some pop up and sinkhole areas and work on. All while we know council, we've been working with a plan of how do we address ARB holistically from Holton to College. And Sean is still working with, Sean and Justin work with council and informational sessions that we can look at that so. At a point we can have consensus on council, present the public with options and how we have to go. Yes, okay. So we are showing a deficit here, five hundred sixteen thousand. So what we have to do, obviously, that's that's based on cash available right now. And cash carryover, that number again is going to change as we go further with the Foligno project. We've yet to receive an invoice from them. Um, as we know, historically, our borough manager puts a lot of contingencies in there that don't come in realization. So we have some extra, we'll have definitely some extra money at the end of the end of this paving program. That we will carry over to the budget to help to defray the impact of twenty twenty six. All this will be available online eventually. The liquid fuels budget, the liquid fuel budget is the money that we receive from the state with the gas taxes that we all pay at the gas pumps. Um, it reflects a two hundred two thousand dollars, but trust me, it's because we haven't spent a dime yet. Uh, we have not received a bill from Foligno, predominantly the majority of the money is going to come from this account to pay for twenty twenty five's real program. So that two hundred two thousand is probably going to be like twelve hundred bucks when we're all said and done. We keep enough in the balance of all the bank just so that the little accounts exist in. But we do spend most of it in one check to the contractor for that current calendar year. So in twenty twenty five, it's going to be Foligno. Who knows, it's going to be in twenty twenty six. Uh, we don't interfund these transfers, we just keep it as a separate account and makes it easier for the other jobs office when they come by every year to take a look at the books. That council is all the funds in a nutshell. Again, this is the thirty thousand foot level. Because there are a lot of subcategories inside these three digit numbers that you see at the beginning. We've tweaked as much as we can. I think Brian, after you reconcile the books, you're going to update that pink column a bit usefully. And then get a new copy set, put, we'll put new copies into shared files so you can take a look at the pink copy. A lot of activities happened. We've paid for the, since we last met. You know, we made our principal initial payments on the bonds. Principal revenue come in, so there's numbers to be changed. Some of those, you know, are hard enough enough in the year. Now I can see this forecast that it carries on. Does the project should not, that sort of thing. The last time I did a query, query, November tenth was the appropriate time for everybody. I was suggesting November tenth again, meeting at six. Six thirty, okay. We can start at six thirty, then we'll go six thirty, eight thirty.
I'd like to suggest also another, that being in provisions. But the, we also need a meeting just to talk about Allegheny. It could be a shorter meeting and um. Sean has said he will come and, you know. I was thinking about Saturday morning. November eighth.
I got patience for. And the fifteenth is already in the month also.
And. Uh, Sean can give you just a little brief overview on the, where we're, where we see in our ARB. And then we'll have to, we need a detailed discussion. We kind of finish back and forth and um. We need to make a decision. So we are also um hoping and. Getting some very general idea. So um, Sean, if you just.
So big picture forward. Try to move, we talked the last time, and arrow the option. So, um, we put a big picture around budgeting number two. Are. Options that i- in all scenarios that are now proposed, um, some concrete paving. Be outside, starting from Holton, we started. Two different options of brick middle, move and replace it all with spa repair. And then an option um for comparison that would show you the concrete. The whole way, um, brick accents, like talking special intersections, crosswalks. Um, so those levels of variation, um. And then kind of a balance of, a balance, but options of what are we called for area? Uh, certainly at the library, Pennsylvania, one side and second quarter area extends to um. Washington the other way or two. So, um. That, that's kind of the framework without getting waves, details, but we can narrow to those options for the next discussion of. All concrete, serve the brick in the middle and then replace all the granite work, do spa. Various options different in, sometimes crosswalks, intersection.
You say spa repair, that allow. Allows to get, get into the substrate, really repair the drainage problems and problem of beef. Areas that need spa.
Yes, so we would repair not just the surface, it did, actually just like the contract we did. When the area is the neighborhood here, that was everything. That, that was pretty, even concrete subbase and then the freight on top of it.
And even what, there may be problems, although it is being on, so.
You know, we've seen significant settlement in a couple of areas, um. And and then the other thing we want to talk, we're big in mechanics and basic. Um, we talked at some point about, and in April, metal budget each year. This, you know, this stretches out probably as you approach a decade to to do in that manner. I know, um, as you mentioned, it may be possibly a bigger square, some sort of funding or financing. Um, how that changes the dynamic of the basic, it's still not a one year project. Um, it's still over here, it's just because disruption. Um, and you could put road closed at either side or road, um, are pretty beneficial.
It's, it's hard to impossible to do it in a short time frame.
No, yeah, it's kind of stretch out over several years. Um, the thing that that helps with that, that staging though and the phasing. Gives us flexibility is the presence of Allegheny Avenue right below. It's parallel, you have a handful of crossovers. Not so confined to start at one end and continue to the other. Not running over with heavy equipment, stuff we just missed last year. They got. Few like, you know, trapdoors in the middle and then you can talk about prioritization and what's first and what's second without. Burning yourself, so.
Like concrete one area that go to the corner is that's off the table.
No, that, that's still in the.
And the, uh, one of the things, um. With spa repairs, additions of subbase. Is, which, what are my questions to us? Why is there so little difference between total price? If we rip it all up, start all over, this section we want to do brick versus taking care of these areas that are bad. And just fixing them and keeping whatever brick is already good. And um, you're saying that what you're saying be.
Yes, so magnitude scale basically, if, if, you know, if a contractor is mobilizing you to do. Spots here and there, moving, you know, your square yard price for that is going to. And set up and move, the, the production goes down basically. You're doing everything. Production goes, I thought it'd be balanced. There's certainly, we think, a lesser total cost in doing spa repair. It's not linear. It's, if it's four hundred bucks a square yard, um, to do. You know, replace completely, you're not going to get four hundred bucks square yard just in totally patches. Although it's an efficiency and production time and overhead, um, that doesn't let no.
If we have the examples that we already have, I mean, they've, that have been done that show you that. Even though it's good, you know, very good repair, it's smooth and it's nice, uh, literally. It's not that setting like this. And so you kind of, what you say is, do. Yes, bricks are good, but, but we don't have that physical. Very nice.
And those these spa repairs would require closures, right?
Well, all of this in some manner, I mean ideally a way to.
Well, that's my point. A spa repair would be part of ocean, a more comprehensive repair, probably same push, correct? So.
Yeah, inconvenience is certainly because no matter what.
Then they cause savings, but it's, but you're giving them some.
The, the other, you talked about this in Paul, I mean, the other thing for weighing into is. Can you spa repair, um, and then the spots that we don't pick now, I'm talking about those in relative near term. Five or seven years. And maybe that's okay, you know, if the budget, if the time would deal with them, they kind of start over at the way. But as you see, none of the numbers are small. It's a big swing in any scenario. Obviously, from a perspective of what's here.
I, I think one of the big things that came up that from the very beginning when we first started this was. The short life of asphalt and with smaller pairs that they have to be done and redone. Versus what we believe would be a very long of concrete and well paid, well paid brick. That, you know, we're talking like eight to ten years of asphalt, having to redo it all the time versus sixty to seventy years. Um, which is a huge, I mean, it's, it's really a long term. I thought it could be, hey, we're supposed to help the actual auction. I think we pretty much have, but. Anyone who might be listening who's, who's still with us, probably already hung up now.
I forget where we said it was life cycle causes probably similar. By the time you regated so many times, the life cycle, problem, complaints are probably similar. Um, you get a nice, new, be paved, black asphalt roads, right? Um, you just have to be committed in difference in some of the neighborhood streets, aesthetics matters here too and after. Instead of three, ten years, the weather, the looks. You'd have to commit that you know you're paving that road.
So, okay, so, but I do think we need a sit down conversation with everybody, both to talk about financing and talk about choice. Whether we do, do portion from a bond or we touch portion from a dedicated village or we just. Take each year and do what we can. And it's, um, and there's present wants to the various choices, but. I think we need to lay those out with numbers and have everybody. Yeah, oh, yeah, we want, we want that. And because it is a big decision and it's one that's going to impact castle. For ten, twenty years, man, it's, it's not a small venture, but. It, it also not, I, I, I just would hate us after spending this much time to kick it down the road. To the next, and the next, you know, it's, it's, it's. I think we need to reach a decision on how we want to proceed with this camp. So. Um, that would be in the next week or two, we would want to have that.
I'll also answer later, I'm sorry, three, three, threeish. Right, it doesn't, it don't have to be person, right? And we'll do zoom for you if you're here, so we show the document, zoom up.
Okay, well, I, I think it's easier, we're here, you can project to the screen. Whatever we're talking about on paper in person, we'll paint it, so we can go on the screen and whatever.
All right, so we'll send out the things, but it's, and suits everybody. And, uh, so we, we will do the November tenth at six thirty for, and we'll try and get the budget wound up there. Or at least almost wound up.
And it has to be voted on by. Questions be voted on by December.
But we have the public, we have to act for the. They called me on something else, so I said, how do we do this? So the first step is, uh, we create the proposed budget calendar year. We advertise the proposed budget and we do that by motion at the next meeting. And, and then it's available to the public and we publish it, you know, in either online or. Um, I know other years there for the added copy to the library. I know other years for the copy library, what if we usually do.
It's it's available online, it is, so we're looking, we're looking, hopefully this November tenth, we finalize this number, so we go into, we go into the final presentation at the regular meeting. Two month, another two, two Tuesdays from now, that you motion advertise that budget, that's the budget we put out for the public to see.
That's. Still consider proposed budget, changes can be made between then and when we would pass it, which would be the voting section in December. So we, this is our proposed draft, but it does leave room for tweaking, um, it makes some changes. And it just has to be approved before December thirty first, but it would be really nice if we can just approve it at the dissent voting meeting. So that's what we're trying for any.
There you go, next time you're back, as you have a correspondence from Oklahoma Water Authority, they have a vacancy that's gonna come up at the beginning of twenty twenty six. And they've submitted a name for your recommendations in there, and it'll be, just to make things easier, we're just gonna run it. At the regular meeting as opposed to waiting for the reorganization meeting, so that way the water authority can start January one with their full committee. So we'll have a motion to take action on. Delcy Homa and and Frank Almond there is retiring from the council, from the board of governors, is what they technically called. He's been sitting there for just over two decades.
They're having a, each year, they're, it's very long term people are moving on, deciding to, uh, rebuild with the newer.
So.
Give me, uh, send them something. Give me some something. Thank you, Ray.
Oh, yeah, I was, um, Hank Beakley is president of that, and I'll see what they do internally. And I I think we, I think when, um, who left, somebody left. Uh, Greg Schultz, or Greg, Greg. Um, he left last year and I think we did a little commendation, is that anybody?
Yes, we did, yeah, we did a commendation, yeah.
Yeah, because it is a big commitment on the river.
Um, IDB five, council member Will, Isaiah was asking, you put this on the, you want to talk about the SNAP program and. What are we doing in the event of the shutdown, is food being distributed? Is the case, I thought maybe ultimately optimism maybe something to happen, but that weekend is a kind of mute, a moot point. Um, I can tell you from our, we reached out to RCA, so you see what they're doing, they don't, they've not contacted us back about helping. We have a pop up food pantry right now at the library, Caitlin has texted me a couple of times already how successful it's been. Yeah, it's really. Yeah, there's a, there's a, she sent me an email, she sent me a text message of it, but it's at the. The area of their fire office where the fireplace is, is a big food pantry. Um, the food banks, and people contribute to, there's a food bank in in Verona that contribute that serves in another area. Um, if I had information on the website or text alert tomorrow, I don't have a memory, I just know it's there, like, don't.
There's, there's a food pantry at the Verona United Methodist Church.
Oh, there's one there too?
Yeah, and there's a car and cabin in the parking lot of the Oakmont United Methodist Church. Um, it's just contains some things that if you need something, you go and get it.
That actually might be easier, we just do a social media post and say, put your information below us in these comments, I'd be certain of that, you know, be easier for that. IDB six also from Isaiah's chapter sixty eight of the Borough Code, we always find ordinances that are in there, we forgot they were there, yes.
Yeah, this one is so weird.
Uh, before I talk trash about it, I just have to see, uh, what the, uh, you know. How did this originate, if anyone in the council knows and, um. I don't believe it's being enforced, um.
Nineteen sixty nine, I think.
I stopped by the police office, yes, you know, today, to get the registration form so I can fill it out from my bike. Um, and they didn't have a clue what I was talking about, um, and so along with that, um. For so, you ride a bike in the borough of Oakmont, you have to go to the police station, you have to fill out a form and then the, uh. Chief will issue you a registration and a plate, along with that, there are also certain. There are things in the ordinance that are kind of, uh, off, and I don't think you really need to regulate the fact that. Uh, if you're heading southbound down Fifth Street, you cannot ride your bike on the left side of the sidewalk. Or the sidewalk on the left side of the street, uh, that's one of the things in there. If you were to go Giant Eagle and you had a bag with you, you can't carry a bag on your bicycle. You also can't zigzag on any streets or sidewalks, um, you have to have both hands on these. The, uh, handlebars at the whole time, if you were to. Exit the sidewalk onto the curb, if you came across through a little bit of grass, if you took your feet off of the pedals, that's also a violation. Sorry, number one hundred part of your horse, yeah. Uh, so I wanted to hear people's thoughts about the ordinance and if there are any parts that you would want to keep. Or, uh, because if not, I would like to propose to repeal the ordinance, uh, next meeting.
What regulations do you have the police officers have to enforce if they follow biking use?
All of them, uh, if they exist, they do exist, uh, like just going back to some of stuff, I know, uh, Pennsylvania. They enacted like stamping of bikes, that was put in when biking was really big in the old days, but bike thefts were up. It was basically, uh, you go to your apartment and do a serialization like, which is like engraving on bikes. I think that probably ended in trying to get. It's like, that was a big, that was a big time thing, a lot of the things is like, um. Pennsylvania, like under like, I think it was like antoxin a long time ago, under the bike safety program, did the thing with. Maintaining control of both end bars, that's a safety issue, not having something that is loose that can be then given in bespoke, so you have a lot. Some of the things do make logical sense that you won't think, but like, why, why can't you have a bag? That's a safety hazard, uh, again, a lot of people here, I don't know with your thing and you catch anything, you go, um, it's a hazard, um. Some of the movements, I don't know why I'm right here, but we have to look at our bottom. We've never enforced it, I'm gonna let you know, like, if you have a problem, I have no issue, uh, there are probably some good things in the, in the code that was put in for safety. I I don't think honestly that, um, uh, the police department, again, other than sometimes when we do find a bike. We still try to go, we will flip the bike over, a lot of bikes still have an actual serialized number, so. Manufacturers start putting serialized numbers, if you want a frame, uh, right near the lower spoke, um, or the front spoke, they will actually have a serial number. In the old days, they didn't do that, that was the police would in most towns put a serialized number on there, so it was just captably. A lot of bike manufacturers put actually now a barcode or a serial number on the bike. We have probably no issue if people still want to like register their bike, but we can do that, just keep some with it, that's something the council wants to do, but. I kind of get what he says, some of the, there are some old ordinances in.
I think, I mean, we can look at something about sidewalks, we'll be able to put that in someone who's in the work, about riding bikes on sidewalks, some of them make sense, some of them. Do not lean your, do not lean your bike up against the gutter.
Yeah, there's, as I said, I looked at it going up, we were told it's by cops like. All right, that makes sense, that does not make sense, that looks fine, but again, I, I can't speak on what it was for in the mask, but it is very outdated.
But one thing I think might be helpful is just keeping online about like appropriate, like reflectors and lights and. Stuff, so like, and I don't know what that means, like peel it all except one lot, you know, like, but it's something that says if you're gonna be riding at night.
Repeal and rewrite, repeal and amend, okay. One action, one works can handle.
Do you think you want to keep your sidewalk?
The, and the other thing to consider is like some of the sidewalk stuff, like, uh, like there are areas with no sidewalks, so like.
Oh, you're, so you're by the street, that's fair.
And I agree, not, uh, not true. I think some of the stuff was bad at day, so I remember this being, I lived in the city for years and this was some of the city stuff, you have to drive. You have to ride your bike this way. Yeah, so I think that's what you probably, I don't know, I, but I'm assuming some stuff.
Think it could be very.
The golf cart things, you visit in this version, or did we, do you not have an ordinance for the golf cart?
Mike Ford, Mike Ford was gonna address that product, he was, he was like, if not tonight, because he was not gonna be here, next meeting he'll talk about this more. Cause there are some other vehicle codes about the.
Yeah, they, uh, the state legislature amended, uh, for it's like UTVs, so those full call cards. We do have a few in town, the ones that we do see, they're all the.
But quote, they're not real golf carts.
Yeah, they're not real golf carts, they're called, again, I think the UTV is the, the term that the state's using, they do have insurance. They have a license plate, uh, they fall, they have lights, they have to have turn signals, they go have the entire. Egality that you have to have to have a vehicle on the road, just like a motorcycle, with all this, uh, those things, so. I know the chief has the whole thing about it, they are popping up, but I think there's five in town right now, uh, all of them that I've seen are legal. Um, registration plates, and again, they have to carry insurance, just like motor vehicle, uh, but he does have a lot of information.
Okay, I just did, I know that that's the help like ordinance came up.
We're not really silent with electric scooters, because I think that's a, that's, they they operate them in the city, like their own vehicles as well. Off the streets, on the street, I mean, off sidewalks, on the street, they have brake lights, they have headlights. So, um, okay.
Real quick, as you said, work for whatever you want to amend that to, you see some flaws in the. Again, a lot of stuff is in an aid, it's not.
We can work with Jake on the project and go for it, I'm looking at what Go Line Valley. So there's no issue, that's okay, generally legislative. Um, just to consolidate time and everything, you know, we were gonna skip over the staff and departments this evening, they're in there, if you have specific questions. Please seek us out, uh, we did receive some inquiries and code enforcement today, um. In an email separately, we're forcing, uh, somebody's jumped, has a vehicle in their backyard, we're handling, make sure it's getting addressed. So we're gonna go right into, uh, community planning, I didn't have a topic here, they're still looking at creating some type of legislation in zoning. That recognizes those large data centers, the AI centers, nothing really to regulate because none of the. Property in Oakmont Borough is, is conducive to have those type of facilities, as you see the big argument spring now, right now with the large former electric plant. The only infrastructure we have is water, the river, and that's about it. But we're at least gonna update the ordinance to recognize the fact that that use exists, and then say, we're letting you to the industrial zoning district and just go from there. And they're working on, they may have a draft, first draft by now, of that ordinance.
Okay, they do that, they better. Big adjustment, big services.
That's why we, it, we're calling it, it's like shooting fish in a barrel, like we have an ordinance against uneventual well drilling in Oakmont Borough, but they never do it, it was done at the department, they have a size for a pad. We do, but again, based on coming from farmland to locations, you may have drilling, I need those, we're having a pad in Oakmont. Same with the data centers, you know, we don't have the property large enough that even makes it, you know, significant for the next generation properties, but we just want to say it's a use. That's completely silent, it's just these happened there. Um, finance in the warrant list, that's the list of checks paid in the month of October is there for your review. Any specific questions, do feel free to reach out to Brian directly, we do his best, he does his best to give you a memo, line, explain whatever things there. Anticipate approving that warrant list at the November regular meeting. Your budget report as of last week, we're probably reconciling since the last thing was Friday, he has a, he has his first deadline, first deadline is make the packet of what you see. And he'll do the reconciliation, we'll see those numbers in the budget, same with the balance sheets, there is as of, um, October twenty fifth, if you want to take a look at newer ones, you can generate. It's so interesting, public safety, Madam President.
Um, um, everybody think, I think tonight.
Public Works, you're gonna see, uh, another hatchet voice, it's actually Hatchet Voice number three, not number two, that's a hypographic error. It's the, their work is our construction manager, it's on par with the project they provided to us, he'll be approving it at the next regular meeting. Um, I know the email says that Shatta Beach payment number three is in my inbox, I didn't see it, I'll look for it. And we'll put that as an action to the regular count at the council meeting, under Public Works or under Parks, we're deciding it. And Madam President? Oh, sure, sure.
I just wanna give you a brief summary, um. How we, because we're out in Val, there's speeders on Washington, I don't, I don't know if you guys got the memo, but I.
We tried to, we tried to have a little bunch of officers, it looked really good, we actually had a flight case this year. Yeah, there was, I gave out, I think about like three hundred seventy seven pages, so, like, we had a lot of, a lot of current trips, it was nice to see.
Yeah, so I appreciate you guys out in Val.
That completes most of our, this week will take questions from the, or comments from the audience. Thought we would never get to this.
Really okay, uh, name's Erin Schutz, I live at seventy forty eighth Third Street.
He's by your last name.
S C H U E T C.
And the address again?
Seven forty eighth Third Street.
Thank you.
Um, here on two capacities tonight, um, first I'll start as the vice president of the school board. Um, thank you all for your consideration, likes, it means a lot to our kids, means a lot to our families, not only in Oakmont, but in Verona. Uh, and they don't focus on Verona, passionate about this as well, they don't really feel like they have a voice, so coming here as a voice for them. I represent both, um, I did meet with Dr. English today, I mean about it, um. We're prepared to start fundraising when the money needed is known, uh, doesn't make sense for us to go out and solicit people and say, we might need it. Why not, we don't know how much we need, um, and I also am on the, somehow, I'm the soccer representative on round, so same answer. Wear many hats, so the same answer, when the money need is known, we're all ready to hop in and do what we need to do. Uh, so thank you, and we look forward to, I know as a board member, I look forward to working closely with you all. Uh, to do what we need to do, and and I'd like to see that relationship too built, just so we can start. Understanding each other's processes, understanding what's going on, so we can be supportive in other ways of what you're doing, you can support us or, you know, ask whatever. So we just get a little more, um, interaction, but thank you, um, as a taxpayer resident, um. I'm sorry that I sometimes fill your inbox with questions about Third Street, um, so my concerns are all about vehicle safety. Um, and our kids getting to school, um, we have made it through, my son's a junior, fingers crossed, uh, he's made it. But the crosswalks needing to be updated, um, I do thank you for the stop sign, lights blinking because people don't stop at the stop sign and it's like a. Race cars, um, one thing I've always had a question about when I lived here, and I don't know if this is the right place to start, but I want to bring it up, is. Why Third Street is not a school zone? It doesn't make sense, it's the, it's the main throughway that kids take to get to school. It's where the cars come through, it's where the buses come through, it's where they walk through, and it's not a school zone. Right, but it doesn't make sense as to why those, and it's at Ten Street the same, those areas need. Lights flashing and people to slow down, and we have the same problems in those areas, why are they not school zones, I've had someone say. Okay, well, I'm asking. No, there's not a flashing light. It's on hold, it's because of the maybe three kids that cross the street on hold. My kid's not seventeen, will be seventeen tomorrow, I still don't think him walking across hold, so, um. That would be a question, I'd love to see how we can make that happen, is it something we have to go to the state, what do we need to do, but. I'm a huge safety person and it just scares me every day that I'm gonna walk out and see someone. Anyone who's walking along Third Street, crossing the road, just get hit because people don't, they don't pay attention. I don't know if they get too much sugar at the bakery or what, they don't pay attention, and it's, it's kind of.
The enhancements that's gone with the Third Street project are going to improve it, that the side are going to push together. So the driver, when they see the light, when they see the signal, come across the bridge, then forget.
Yeah.
So it used to be a four, it used to be a four grid, now it's just one side, it's a big bakery, speedway side.
Yeah.
And then come across the school.
Yeah, I don't like, I've take my dog there, I'm like, I'm not walking across the road, like, I'll go some other way, or just don't go. But if there's some discussion that can be opened about how to make that, it, it just never made sense, why is the main egress area? Not a school zone, but halt in the road that. No one's crossing.
I would say one of Pittsburgh City Schools, uh, streets right here, schools, I think there's something. That got I think, I think maybe it was.
Thank you, it's this.
Yeah, Ellis has one, right? If I get in that way.
I think it's his speed, there's something that, um. Don't have a school zone, right? Posted in front of their school, it has a speed limit, it's less. But that's on.
Yeah, Central does.
Central does, I guess.
But that's on Big Daven, see, there's a difference, Alsworth was one, you asked you, uh, Penn Avenue was a city school. But the smaller streets with the lower speed limit, I think has something to do with that.
But I, but Third Street is higher, I think so.
Third Street is higher than 15 miles per hour.
Yeah, but it's under 25. Maybe, I don't know.
25.
It's 25.
Every resident. An area qualifies as a school zone through an approval process by local authorities and the State Department of Transportation. To establish a zone, local authorities must submit a plan detailing student walking routes, school hours, and proposed speed limits to hand out for approval. It says, it's limited to a maximum of 1,600 feet. Clearly, we're.
Thank you. Yeah, all right. Few days down the.
All right, thank you for your service and all that you do, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, for the first time, we didn't have one. And it wasn't one I said, there is, but I sent Rita's. Penn Avenue did, though. Well, I found a PA code.
We're almost done.
Sure, somebody said, what is Oakmont Annex from Plum? And, you know, they were just going, oh, you know, from their memories or whatever they heard, and. And somebody told me, well, they're following their 1950. That from the, the. Going up the hill to the left to Councilman Anthony from 11th on up. Was all, became Oakmont that one time, and then. But I, I mean, it is amazing, but it's invisible. Whatever, one hit one dosed. So. All right, if, um, there's no further business, um, I will accept the leave to reserve under executive decision for, because that ends up legal and not as personal. Some of. I was having a note and Jen Ferris said, you know.